Good evening and welcome to tonight's work session for the school district of Oconee County. This is one of two meetings we'll have this month, so we're having such a nice crowd here tonight, so we just welcome each one of you. And let's begin, as we always do, by observing a moment of silence if you'd like to. So we'll start that way. Thank you. Tonight we have a very, very special young man with us. I've had the pleasure of meeting him for just a few minutes. Tate Kegel, he's from Kiwi Elementary School, and he's going to lead us in our pledge. And also tonight, Josh Holliday, who is the principal at Kiwi Elementary, and Amanda Scott, who is the assistant principal, are here. And I believe Josh is going to introduce him, but this is Tate Kegel.
This is Tate Kegel. He is here tonight, Ryan Kenkay, his sister Cameron's here. Also, his teacher, Kristy Moore, so she's here representing everyone in their class. Very proud to be here, honored to be here. Y'all were recognized as one of our students for a contest winner for the DAR essay. The title was "Talk About A Scare." So we were notified that Tate won the district contest. And a few weeks later, maybe a month or so later, we were notified that he was going to be recognized at the state luncheon as a state winner. So we're very proud of him. He's a great athlete, and obviously a good writer, too. Surprisingly, no. So we'd like to recognize him, and we're proud of him.
So you'll stand?
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we are so very, very proud of Tate for he's very modest about his writing. He really had no idea it was that good. We're so proud that he has brought this honor to Oconee County and being a state winner. So let's give Tate a hand. All right, and as we begin, I need an approval of the March 8, 2021 work session agenda. Did anyone see any changes, any additions? All right, and it will stand approved since there are no objections. And now, public comment. Did we have any public comment?
Yes, ma'am, George Anderson.
If you'll stand right here, and that microphone that's highlighted red there, we need you to kind of talk near that so we can pick it up.
Okay. Good evening to each and every one, to Dr. Thorzlin, to school board members. Thank you so very kindly for giving me this opportunity to address the school board. I'm here on behalf of the community, some of the concerns that we may have in the community concerning diversity. Some of the things we are concerned about is the hiring process. I hope and trust that each candidate who is applying for a particular job, you know, Oconee County, that each candidate is considered carefully for the job. And not only that, that each candidate gets consideration in terms of his or her qualifications. One of the things that we do have is that we're concerned now that the children, that for the future and future reference, we want to make sure that they have the opportunity to excel in the classroom and to see people like themselves, to motivate them and to give them incineration to want to be an educator. So we just think, and we hope and trust, that each candidate who comes before the school board, they are considered very carefully. Because what we did, we didn't, and we had a dialogue with the city administrators a couple of weeks ago. And one of the things we came out of that dialogue was with, there were a lot of conversations. And what I'm trying to do tonight is to open this door for conversation with the school board, that we can communicate, there's some things we can help you with, some things maybe we don't know that you know, and you can inform us in terms of what we need to do to help you bridge this gap. And the main thing, I'm just here tonight to just lay out the foundation, so we can maybe at some point have a Zoom call, if we can do that, we can set it up for you, and have the community, we had them submit questions to us, and we had a moderator who delivered the questions, in terms of asking the question to individuals. So if that's something you may be willing to do, we certainly would appreciate that, and we will consider it in the future, for future reference. The main thing is, let me just say thank you very kindly for taking the time out to listen to me, but that's where we are, and that's why I'm here tonight. Thank you very kindly.
Mr. McCormick, do you mind if I?
No, please.
Share a couple of things. We certainly do value diversity, and I agree wholeheartedly, Mr. Anderson, that our students should see people of the same ethnicity working in our buildings. We would love to see our employees, our staff, ethnic breakdowns kind of match what those are of our students. So we are very consciously aware of trying to hire African-American teachers, Latino teachers. That's actually probably the area where we're most efficient, is Latino teachers. So we're certainly aware of that, and we're actively recruiting and trying to hire employees that, again, will give our minority students the role models and, you know, to look up to as they're going through our K-12 system. So we agree with you on that. Mr. Leroy and I, matter of fact, several of us, met a young man the other day who reached out to us, African-American young man who thinks he might want to teach English. And we rolled out the red carpet, and that's the way we want to be seen and what we want to do to, you know, recruit employees into our district. So thank you for sharing that, and we're certainly open to a dialogue and ways that we can improve. Thank you so much.
Yes, and Stritch, and thank you so much for being here, and I hope this is just the beginning of some conversations that we can have, but I do thank you for taking the time and coming tonight.
Thank you.
And that is all?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. All right, so we'll continue with our discussion items. And first up is Josh Shepherd, who has come to give us a technology update tonight.
Good evening. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to update you on the craziness of everything that's happened in our department for the past year. I'm going to try not to be too technical. Mr. Herrn always gives me a hard time to make sure that he can understand everything, so...
Make sure you dumb it down.
I do want to introduce Zach Shepherd, who's in the back, kind of my second in charge, who kind of helps me do all the things that we do, and appreciate him coming to support us. Kind of start with, I think you need to understand numbers. So a lot of what I'm going to share with you tonight is just kind of giving you into perspective of kind of what we do and how we support. We have 379 network switches, so those are like the modems in your house that make the Internet work, and that's across 21 locations. We have over 1,200 access points, those are those white boxes right there that make the wireless Internet work for all of our devices. 1,100 TVs and interactive panels throughout our classrooms and buildings. 203 printers, 23 physical servers, and 83 virtual servers. Virtual means that we're able to take one box and put a lot of different servers on there. Back in the day when Mr. Rukat was here, you used to have to have one box for one program, and we're able to save quite a bit of money by virtualizing. 12,000 Chrome devices, so Chromebooks, we use those for digital signage for teachers. 6,500 Windows PCs. 1,200 phones, 91 cell phones. 622 security cameras, and then thousands of peripheral devices like label makers, barcode scanners, personal printers, those kind of things. So I say all that to say is that we have a lot that we keep up, and a lot that can break every single day. And we have a small, so we have a staff of 15, which has grown, but it takes a lot to keep this number of devices up across our network. So Chromebook refresh, right? You hear, this past year, we were delayed on getting student devices in the kids' hands. I'm happy to tell you with this, we actually ordered our devices for the '21-'22 school year in October, and we were supposed to receive those in March, and they had been delayed till May. So that tells you about a backlog. So I was really happy that we worked together at the administration here to kind of get that order in as super early as we could, to make sure that we have devices for our kids in the fall. But essentially, we are on a cycle where we are replacing first grade, sixth grade, and ninth grade each year. Those first grade devices, we're hoping to last five, so that, because they're not going home as often, the middle school devices will last three, and then that fourth and fifth year will be used to replenish lawners, and then breakages across the other grade levels. And then our ninth grade devices will last for four years, and we hope, if allowed pending board approval, once we're into this rotation, that those students will be able to take those devices and keep them, to help them in whatever path they choose outside of their education path here with us. So you see, that's about $600,000 a year. So it's quite a bit of money just to keep devices in students' hands. Our kindergarten devices, we're a mix of touch and non-touch. We are working to get those on a rotation, but we don't see a need to be one-to-one across our entire district, and we're just, we're gathering data to see kind of what those steps look like going forward. And then staff devices, we currently have about 915 devices for our staff for Chromebooks. We have 135 desktops, and then specifically for staff use, and then 1,040 laptops. So we have gotten these on a four-year rotation, which is about $983,000 every four years. So what this allows us to do is to make sure that we have equitable access for all of our teachers. Previously, we had some teachers who only had a desktop, we had some teachers who had seven and eight-year-old devices, while other schools were able to buy newer devices every two to three years for their teachers. So we have equitable access across the district for that. We are also planning after those four years to sell those devices. We utilize GovDeals and have been very, very successful with that, and we're hoping to bring in somewhere between $250,000 to $300,000 to put forth towards new devices. So really looking at the overall return on investment and when that sale point is, when we talk about keeping devices for a fifth or sixth year, your resale value drops significantly. So it is better for the district to stay on a four-year cycle and to have newer devices for our staff.
Let me interrupt Josh real quick right there. Just to point out, a lot of districts are on a refresh cycle with their laptops, but most districts probably sub that out to a company who would come in and do that. Our folks do that themselves, because every time you hire a company, you're paying that company a fee, they're selling those laptops to somebody, but they're keeping part of the profits. Josh and his team do that themselves, so that the school district gets the most bang for the buck. And it's a lot of extra work, but they've become friendly with GovDeals, and that's very, very helpful.
Yeah, and I will say for Chromebooks, that's usually about $10 to $15 a device, the wide-bl service that Dr. Thorzlin is talking about that many districts pay. We have found it more beneficial, we partner with some of our special needs students, and it gives them opportunities in the summer to come unbox. We'll also talk about our student internship program that we have, so being able to keep that in-house, and the money that we do have to spend for that extra labor, we invest back into our students here in the county instead of handing it away. So say, let's say, hardware is one area, right? That's one of the things that we touch, but we also have a lot of software in our district. And so we currently roster over 70 programs. So those are programs that we are creating accounts for staff or students, and making it easy for them to log into. And I'm going to kind of drop to that bottom one. If you look, we utilize a software called Clever for single sign-on, so that's a dashboard where our students can just click a picture, and they get logged into the program without having to actually type in a username and password. And if you look just this school year, we've had 2.7 million logins through Clever. So that's 2.7 million times we save our students from having to type in a username and password. And so we have a, we'll talk about towards the end, but we have a pretty selective process for software that we work very closely with Mr. Simmons' team. And one of that is to make sure that the software we're purchasing and utilizing in our school district supports single sign-on, so that we can make access easy for our students. Not going to read all of these to you, but I will tell you, the $7.2 million pages printed this past year is actually down $4 billion from the previous year, so our time during COVID, we cut that down even with all the kindergarten packets and all. And then we have built nine custom applications, saving roughly $160,000 a year. I say all that to say that all these numbers, someone has to support it, someone, you know, things break when you're looking at numbers this large in programs. And so our team has done a really great job. Something that I pointed out to my team this morning is, if you look at the bottom for the software for the data, that old print, 30 terabytes of data, that's your house locally in our basement, and then we back that up. So to put a terabyte into perspective for you, most iPhones are about 64 gigabytes of data, okay? One terabyte is 16 phones completely full of data. And so we're storing 30 downstairs, and we're then backing that up three different times, so we're having to pay for that space. But this year, we actually surpassing cloud storage. So in Google, we are now at 35.9 terabytes of data, and that actually grew by almost nine terabytes in a year. So these tools that we're putting in front of our teachers and in front of our students, they're utilizing, and it's growing very rapidly. So the cloud data saves us money, so that's why we like it. Software, we partnered across the district this year, and we purchased a service called Gaggle. What Gaggle does is it actually, we implemented it late November. It monitors all of our emails, Google Docs, slideshows, and it looks for signs of distress with students. So it looks for signs of suicide, it looks for mental health issues, it looks for bullying, it looks for all of these things that we have concerns and that we've discussed as a district, and then it classifies them. So the numbers that you see in front of you, a violation is like a kid used a bad word, you know, they just, they use a curse word. We don't really, you know, we deal with those as we have to at the schools. And then those Qcons are situations where like a kid needs help, but it's not immediate. So a kid has signs of mental health, a kid has signs of maybe kind of leaning towards suicide, and then those PSSs are actually student situations. Those are times the company has picked up the phone, and they have called an administrator, they have called a guidance counselor, they have made sure that they got in contact with somebody, because the student is in need of immediate help. So say that we're putting thousands of devices in kids' hands, and we're doing programs in kids' hands, we have a responsibility to make sure that we're keeping that safe, and that we're helping and providing those mental health needs. And so Gaggle has been a really good partner for us, and it's one of those things that, you know, we've had alerts at 2:00 AM when students are searching for, you know, how to harm themselves, and they were able to get an administrative phone, and we were able to get law enforcement or medical help to those families to make sure that we didn't have a situation where a student was harmed. Another positive thing, software-wise, that we brought up this year, hopefully you've heard about it from your elementary schools, if you're in contact with them, but we did build a custom in-house dismissal system this year, which allows our teachers to pull this board up in their classroom and filter it. And so as car lines are going through, parents are coming through, they're able to enter their car tag number and inquiries the information from our school, and then helps for a smooth dismissal. So COVID is probably number one reason, so that we can have social distancing, but many of our schools feel very strongly that they're going to keep this process in place afterwards, because it has made their car line such a more efficient and a quieter experience, less stressful.
Josh, can I, just to make it clear, in the past, we would dismiss school at 2:30 at our elementary schools, and all the car riders would go to a specific location and just be bunched up, and as the parents pulled up, the kids would go to their car. Well, with COVID, we couldn't bunch kids up, and that was a problem. And they solved our problem by allowing kids to stay in their classrooms. This is broadcast to all the classroom devices, TVs or panels, and then the kids can see their name come up, and they know, okay, now it's my turn to walk to the car. So it has saved us a tremendous amount of trouble during COVID, so another kudos to them.
And I will say, when you're, if you think about it in that cafeteria, you have 300 kids, and you're trying to keep that quiet so they can hear numbers, which is very stressful. I've been there myself as an elementary school teacher. This is, you have 20 kids at the end of the day in a classroom, and it's just a very smooth and stress-free process. So Zach, I will give him kudos, he did right just from scratch. This is not something that we went out and purchased, which we would probably pay about $50,000 to $60,000 a year. We wrote it in-house, and he did it in about two weeks, just to meet the need of our kids. And then support, right? So we have all this, and we have to provide support. So these are just some numbers for you, to kind of put in perspective, starting last March through February, of the number of health tickets submitted and the number of phone calls to our two support lines. We have one for staff and one for students. We started that support line during COVID. If you look at that, 4,000 in March, there were only 12 of us in our department, 12, 13 of us, and I won't say that all these were answered, these are calls we received, because the bulk of it was not written. To put it in perspective for you, two years ago in August, a high month for us was 600 tickets. 600 tickets two years ago was absolutely overwhelming for our department, so almost 1,600 now is extremely overwhelming, and it takes until probably November or December for us to catch up. But it's a good thing, right? It means that people are asking for help, it means that people are comfortable asking our department for help, and we're meeting those needs. Quicker, I wish we were meeting them quicker, but the need of our department has just clearly grown. The other point I'd like to point out to you is that our model split in March, okay? We went from being an internal support to teachers, possibly students, depending, to we now have a direct phone line where we're supporting parents, students, teachers direct. So from an internal support model to an external, that a lot of times, we're their first line of trying to get help, especially for our virtual students, but for many of our families just navigating our systems with registration, with surveys that we send out, with finding information. So it's, my staff has done a really great job of just meeting the need where our community is. We're also very proud of our student intern program, so we do have four student interns, and I would like to say, people look at an internship program as free labor from the outside, but it takes a lot of time and a lot of effort to mentor these students, to provide the training, and to give them the access to the system so that they truly can grow. We really look at it as a process that they are growing, we are growing them, hopefully to come back and work here one day. But, you know, it's, it's been very successful having high school students come and work in our department, so that will support our teachers and support our students.
And that is for paid?
It is.
So students earn a paycheck? And don't you have, our first intern now works for you?
Full-time, yes. One of our first full-time, one of our first interns is now a full-time employee in our department who came back. So it's a very successful, and I think they're always, you're going to see their clothes, but they're always amazed to see what the life of it doesn't just work, right? There's so many steps to make that work in the classroom, and to expose these students. And I will say, many of them go into college and then reach back out, because they didn't realize how prepared they were from our internship, going into a classroom with people who've never had the opportunity to touch as many things as they get here. And last but not least, because I don't want to take the whole night, just some other benchmarks that we're really proud of in our department. We digitalize our report cards and schedules, making that really easy to get that information out. And that was a COVID reaction, but something very positive going forward. We did the iPad sale for our students and received a lot of positive feedback. We sold over 451 iPads to our families. You probably saw pictures where we shut down Main Street Bahala with the car line, Dr. Thorzlin and Mr. Handy were directing traffic for us. So it was just a really positive time going into the winter break for our families. I will say, we're still working on dates for the sale for the community, but we're really, we're really excited about that. We really, we're hard on our employee onboarding process, so when students working with finance and working with HR, so that a lot of automated information goes out. Ms. Ketterman probably recently received that when she came on board, but not having to have someone come here and walk through everything, being able to automate account creation and get information out to employees so that they can get started in a more efficient time. We did a classroom display refresh, so all new TVs and digital interactive panels throughout our classrooms. Software review process we talked about. Domain migration to stuc.org during the middle of the pandemic. I think the entire community and world is really happy that z.oconee.kegel.s.c.us is on the way. And so we had planned that for a year, and thought about kind of ditching that during the middle of the pandemic, but my team, you know, we stuck to it, and it was very positive. And then just asset management, a lot of the things with the pandemic, people don't realize, is that devices went everywhere, and we have a responsibility to taxpayers and a responsibility to federal government for tracking our assets, whether that be Tyler, Monin, K, ESOL, or devices, all the general fund money. And so my team has worked really hard to track down our assets, hard for the tornado and things flying in a pandemic, but that's kind of one of those trial things we are, that we've worked extremely hard this year to get a handle on the assets that belong to the district, to make sure that we're giving the accurate funding numbers and accurate reports of where things are.
Josh, tell them where you found our devices before. Where, what locations in the world?
Yeah, so for our student devices during the pandemic, we had a student who stayed in Mexico for the majority of the pandemic. We had students in the back of 18-wheelers doing classes as they traveled around to California. Many of our devices just went all over the world. So anytime you could log in, you would see kids in Michigan, kids in California, kids in Washington State. And so to know that they're there and doing work back here in Oconee County is really amazing, number one, that we're facilitating that, but number two, that we have that opportunity. And so we've kind of tried to keep track of that, but it's phenomenal to see that as a team and as a school district, that we're able to support that and then meet our families. That's a lot, I know, but we do a lot, and I'm very thankful for the support. I will tell you, we talked to other colleagues in other districts across the state with technology, and we're a leader. We are one of the few districts who went fully one-to-one, and we are one of the only districts that went fully one-to-one in the timeframe that we did during the pandemic. And I credit that, number one, to my team, but number two, to the support of the board and the administration here for seeing our vision. It's been a long five years, but investing in that and making sure that our students have an equal opportunity to the tools, hardware, and resources that they need.
I just wanted to say, the biggest difference you notice in my time, because technology falls under our department, has just been the number of things, the number of devices and programs that we utilize in the district, and that people have to upkeep and load and roster and do all those kind of things for. So we're thankful for all our departments, but we're thankful for our folks who make sure the technology runs smoothly. I tell teacher Dr. Thorzlin, you know, if I went away, you could replace me in about 15 minutes, but if the folks in the technology department went away, we wouldn't know how to act. Because teachers wouldn't know who to call, and people wouldn't know where to go for help, and those kind of things. So it's a lot of responsibilities, 24/7, 365, it never, never stops. Every time a server goes down, or a switch goes out, or whatever, they get an email or a text, and so it's, we greatly appreciate their hard work.
I did just have a question, and thank you for all that you and Zach do, and your team, your whole team, not just, not just one person here, but if I were a new teacher, or even, you know, any teacher coming in, and I wanted to explore some new technology, what does your, what does your department do to support the instructional side of the technology, and is that something that you guys do?
Yeah, so we're married. So it's a marriage, whether we like it or not, we laugh with Lisa. So one of the first things we do... Lisa. So one of the first things we do is, we're really good at this in the summer for August starts. We are not really good at this throughout the year and that's something we're working on. We do a new employee orientation where we kind of go through everything we offer. We have a document called the Technology Resources Guide where we document every program, all the gotchas, the how-tos. And we really call it our technology bible. We live and breathe by it. It's a living, breathing document. And so we work really hard to make sure, number one, that they just know what's available. Number two, we then work, especially with new teachers and first-year teachers, we do small group in some of our onboarding and we expose them to robotics. We expose them to things going on in the classroom. And then Anna Schider and Melissa Van Heck and I are kind of partners throughout the year just to get information out. I will tell you, it's really hard to live in both worlds. I do, I travel it. But we really rely heavily on our instructional technology team to get that information out. But then we try, especially from leadership from, from our department, we try to be involved in that as much as possible.
Thank you. Well, I'm not going to say that I'm not overwhelmed by this. It's just so much. And I'm sure last March, you really didn't expect to be where you are today. But y'all have just done an incredible job. I hear it in the schools. And Zach, the dismissal program is just, it's just made a world of difference. And, and the way you manage our money, I, it's just wonderful. And we're so proud of you and your team. And thank you so very much. And I would, do we have this so that we can download this presentation?
Yes.
That's great. I would love to see it because it is, it's just amazing. And as I say, we, I hear such good things in this school and I'm sure others too about, you know, how you operate and what you do. And we just, we're here because you function as you do.
Thank you.
And we thank you so very much.
And if any of you are wondering, because you've been looking at Mr. Shepherd, that is a wooden boat collar.
I would not.
We greatly appreciate it. It is an honor. And I think coming from the classroom to where we are, to kind of speak to what Ms. Dr. Ketterman said, we have a great relationship with instruction. We work very closely together. And it's a, it's a prime opportunity to see how operations, instruction kind of comes to the teacher needs and senior needs. So thank you.
Well, please thank your whole group for us. We appreciate it. Wow. I pick up the phone and call. I'm one of those. I'm one of those statistics. And now Rebecca King has a reading recovery update for us. And welcome.
Thank you. I am Rebecca King. I am the teacher leader in training for the district. I will be replacing Ellen Sanford, who is retiring at the end of this year. So I'm really excited to be in this role to help more of the schools in the district. Right now I'm housed at Jameson Brown Elementary. And I've been teaching reading recovery for 10 years before I was a first grade teacher. So I want to give you an update, kind of give you a face to the name, if you see it out and about, and answer any questions that you may have. First, I want to introduce you to our current team in the district. We have reading recovery in every elementary school except for two for this year. Ellen Sanford is pictured first. She is our current teacher leader, like I said. And with her, she has Kristen Strader, which is underneath her at Northside Elementary. We have two teachers at Blue Ridge Elementary, Teresa Keen and Christine Shumpert. We have one at Farrow, which is Randy Dixon. She will be joined by another one next year. This year she was, there was going to be another one trained, but pandemic and virtual classrooms had to happen. But we'll have one joining her. Julie Addis is with me at Jameson Brown. Then we have two actually in training this year, their first year, one at Orchard Park and one at Bahala Elementary. That's Leslie Blackwell and Kim Phyllis. And they are joining, actually Kim is by herself, but Leslie is joining Marco Williams at Orchard Park. And then we have at Ravenel, Elizabeth Norton, who's actually doing virtual classroom this year, but she will be rejoining us next year. And then Joanne Martin at Westminster Elementary. So we have 12 for this year. So tonight, I would like to just kind of tell you the why of reading recovery, what's involved in it, how we know it works, and also who benefits from it. So first of all, the why. We've seen pictures like this before. We have this equality versus equity. And if we provided all of our students with the exact same instruction, we know that that's not going to work because our students are very diverse in their backgrounds and their abilities. And so we have to provide an equitable instruction for them for all to be successful. And that's exactly what reading recovery is all about. Dr. Maury Clay is the founder of reading recovery and she says that we must develop the best available lessons for the hardest-to-teach children as early as possible. And the key there is as early as possible. Because if we wait, we're going to have this achievement gap that continues to widen. At the beginning, when we have students that are below their average performing peers, they kind of gradually progress together, but there's still a gap. As they move forward in their grade levels, that gap is going to widen if we don't hit that early. So here's what happens when we wait. I'm not sure if you can see that very well, but if you look at the green dash line, this is an average performing student, where they begin and as they progress through their first grade year. Reading recovery is a first grade intervention. Then looking at the blue line, this is a student who was well below grade level and was picked up by reading recovery and accelerated during the first semester from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year. And you can see the accelerated growth that they made. And then once that intervention was stopped, because we only keep them between 12 and 20 weeks, depending on what they need to catch up to that average range, then they are still able to maintain that growth to the end of the year. The red line shows a student who was also well below grade level, who was not picked up at the beginning of the year, but then picked up in the middle of the year. You can see that they maintained a little bit of growth at the beginning, from the beginning of the year to mid-year. But you can already see that gap kind of widening towards the middle of the year, but then was able to be picked up by reading recovery in the middle of the year and the accelerated progress that they were able to make from mid to end of the year. And finally, the purple dash line is a student who was well below grade level and was not able to be picked up by reading recovery for whatever reason. And you can see they maintained progress, yet at the end of the year, they're still below grade level. So we can see how early intervention is going to support those students who need it at that point. If we think about early intervention like a medical analogy, we're all about prevention. If we had, God forbid, a, a health crisis come our way, we have to think about, do we want to prevent that from happening or do we want to wait until after it happens and try to fix it? And so we are an intervention of prevention rather than waiting until that failure hits. We're trying to prevent reading failure and that way their confidence of those students are boosted, their enhanced emotional and social development. We know there's a huge correlation between emotion and cognition. Emotion, as far as even in the brain, emotion is the architect of our cognition, how we learn, how we behave and everything. So to be able to bolster that early in our students and then of course, eliminating the over-identification of special education students. So what is involved in reading recovery? We are, like I said, an intervention of prevention rather than remediation. And we're going to accelerate those students from wherever they are. We start with the child, wherever they are, and we accelerate them as quickly as possible to get where they need to be in order to perform with their average peers. Remediation is often more costly and sometimes ineffective where prevention, we're already catching it kind of like Barney V, you nip it in the bud before it even happens. And then we accelerate them as quickly as possible so that they feel that success early on. So here are the components of reading recovery. We begin with the observation survey, which is a six-subtest assessment. It measures letter identification, word recognition, phonemic awareness, the ability to write sight words, how we look at print. Does a child even know how to hold a book? Do they know that the print contains message? Do they recognize if print is flipped upside down? You know, the basics of how to manage a book and also the text level of whatever they're able to read at that point. And then we take that assessment, we form a summary of all the subtests and kind of get an overall picture of what that child can do, and then design individualized lessons for that student in order to continually boost them up from their cutting edge of where they are and continually to boost them up gradually and as quickly as possible to accelerate them to where they need to be. This is the component of, or these are the components of every single reading recovery lesson. We have six components. The first one is familiar reading, where we pull books that they've already read before. And we know the power behind repeated readings, but this is to increase fluency, to increase comprehension, also to increase confidence because when they feel successful at a book, they're going to want to read more. Then we go into a running record where we take an assessment and the reading behaviors that we see as they're reading. It gives us so much more as far as, you know, you kind of see just checks on a page, but it tells us about the actual reading behaviors and trying to get inside the student's head of what they're doing while they're reading. Are they using meaning? Are they using syntax in the sentence? Are they able to use what the print looks like to help themselves? Are they rereading? So many behaviors that we're able to capture on that running record. Then we look at some letter work and word work where we're teaching the students not item knowledge, we're not teaching them letters, we're not teaching them words, but we're teaching them how to use and manipulate those things so that they can problem solve other words in text and recognizing the reciprocity between the reading and the writing and how it all comes together because it's all about the story. It's, it's not about words and letters. It's about telling the story or reading the story. Then we have a writing component where they write their own personal story. And this is where everything kind of orchestrates together because they're taking their own thoughts from their head, putting it down on paper. And then at the same time, they're rereading their story and taking it back from the paper back into their head. So it's this cycle of, I can read it, I can write it, and it makes it more powerful. It's a really solid connection that they're able to make. And then after that, we do a cut-up of that story. We put it on a sentence strip and cut it up and then have them reassemble it to where they have to look at the orthographic information. They have to look at what it looks like, what it sounds like, what, if it makes sense, and pull all that, those pieces together. And then finally, we have a new text that they read where they're able to show what strategies are they able to use independently and what are we still having to kind of scaffold to help move them along and kind of boost and get, get that next level up of what they need to be doing. So how do we know it works? This is some data from 2018, 19. This was our last quote-unquote "normal" year before the pandemic, but there were 125 first graders served in our district. 97 of those received a complete program. Those that did not receive a complete program may have moved. They may have been early identified for special services and they were pulled so that they could receive those services. Or it could have been that we just ran out of, we just ran out of year because they were picked up second wave and maybe, you know, May hit us before we were able to complete the program. But 97 did receive a complete program. And out of that 97, we had 86 reach average levels of reading and writing and 14% made progress, but not necessarily to the expected levels. And that just simply means we have another data point to where we can then see what other support that that child needs and to provide that equity that they need to be successful. I love this graph. This is probably my favorite. In a 12 to 20-week period, which is the timeframe of how long we keep reading recovery students, that's four to five months, then students made seven to 13 and a half months growth, where an average first grader makes about the same amount of growth that they're in the school, five months. But when they're in this intense intervention, then they're able to make double or more in some cases. And this, this is not just students that successfully completed the program, but these are students that even just made progress and didn't even make it to average. They still made that much growth. And they would not have had that opportunity in other situations. So what happens after first grade? This is a huge question. Well, does it carry over into second grade? Does it carry over? Are we able to see any longitudinal data to where we see that this is working for the long term? Here we have, this is not district data, this is state data. We don't have access to district data on this, but this is state data for a sample of 100 students that were part of a study. And these students received 10 books during the summer from the Dabo Swinney All-In Foundation. And that was just to help kind of bolster during that summer so there wouldn't be a summer slag and encourage reading in the home and to build those personal libraries in the home. So here we have first grade at the beginning of the year and to the end of the year. And we've already seen the data of how fast they can accelerate in that first grade year. Then in the summer between first and second grade, then you see that they're able to maintain that progress. There was no summer slag in that year. And then, here it goes, between the beginning of second grade to the end of second grade, they were still able to maintain progress in their classrooms without the support of reading recovery. And finally, that summer between second and third grade, that they were able, able to accelerate even almost close to fourth grade reading levels because of the strategic activity that they gained. We're not teaching items. We're teaching them how to process, how to problem solve. And so it's carrying over throughout the grade levels. So who benefits from reading recovery? Of course, the kids do. Again, in 2018, 19, we had 125 students served by 13 reading recovery teachers at that time. On top of that, each reading recovery teacher also teaches small groups during part of their day. So that's an additional 340 students in small groups. So technically, each reading recovery teacher served around 28 students during the course of that year. The reading recovery teachers also benefit. They receive graduate-level training from Clemson University. It's 12 graduate credits and it's an intense program. I, I always joke around that in my first grade classroom, I thought I was good at reading until I took this training. And then it completely opened my eyes of what I had not been seeing before. It's very intense, but very powerful at the same time. We have these enhanced theoretical foundations where we're able to see the rationale of why students are thinking this or doing this. And we're able to almost get inside the heads of our students because we're seeing and closely observing those behaviors to see what strategies that they're using in the head. We also, those observational skills are, I would put up our reading recovery teachers to just about any other teacher as far as observation and being able to, to tell what the child is thinking during any point in moment in that lesson. Also, the ongoing professional development. We meet every month and we have live case samples where we're behind a two-way mirror. One reading recovery teacher and child are doing a lesson and the rest of us are watching that lesson. And it's helping us ground our rationales and how we teach our students and also helping that teacher. A lot of times we'll take our hardest-to-teach student because we need the expert opinion of those in the room. And so we're helping each other to build each other up in order to support our students even more. And then we have this huge network of professional support from the state. Our trainer is housed at Clemson University. She works very closely with the schools. Dr. Bates is her name. We also have a teacher leader in residence from Clemson University that also works very carefully and closely with the schools who I call the guru of reading recovery. She actually knew Maury Clay when she was alive. But we're very fortunate to have that connection as well as around the state, around the nation, so much support from so many experts in the field. And of course, our schools benefit. When you have a reading recovery teacher in the building, then you have access to another literacy expert in the building. It's not just another teacher that's pulling a child, but you have another person who has this expertise in literacy to help with coaching. You can help with professional development in the schools, which is of course free because you're already in the school building. You're not having to pay for the professional development. We have these reflective conversations, these powerful conversations with teachers where you're, you're able to, and there's a scripture actually in the Bible that says, iron sharpens iron. You're buffering each other, then you can grow and learn with each other. And then of course, you have the shared vocabulary where students are getting the same kind of instruction in the intervention, in that intense intervention as they are in the classroom. And it just helps solidify their, their thinking and learning. We have an increased quality of teachers and there's no better way to invest in education than in our teachers who are teaching our students. I've already mentioned the partnership with Clemson University. We have a great partnership with the All-In Foundation that has really supported us with providing not just those students during that year, but every year, every reading recovery child in the state gets 10 books to take home to build their classroom, their home libraries, actually. And then probably the favorite among principals is the ability for the early literacy training class. Every school that has a reading recovery teacher also has the opportunity to train anyone in the school in the same training that a reading recovery teacher would have. That way it's helping to kind of boost their literacy instruction in the classroom. They also receive graduate credits during that one year of training. They get eight credits. And that training, as well as the training that reading recovery teachers take on, is completely free to the district because we're now under state and federal grants that are paid for all of that. So it's a powerful connection to where we're getting the same instruction throughout. And it could be administrators, literacy coaches, classroom teachers are able to receive that training. And then of course, the district benefits because when we have that foundation of literacy, then not only our district, but our community, our, our cities are, we're going to benefit because we're going to have, you know, you have to know how to read and write for everything, regardless of what your career path is. So the entire district benefits. So before I leave, I would like to let you know that I would be more than happy to help in any way I can. If you ever want to come and observe a reading recovery lesson, my door is always open. And I'm sure all the other reading recovery teachers would welcome you. If you would not, if you'd rather meet virtually, we, we would be glad to do a Zoom meeting with you just so you can see the power behind this intervention. And in addition, if you ever want me to come back and give another update, I'm more than happy to do that as well. happy to do that as well. Do you guys have any questions for me?
So I saw the statistic, 125 students in that one year.
Yes.
Are there still students that we don't get to serve?
There are some schools that are not fully implemented. Depending on the screen that we do at the beginning of the year, we typically screen the bottom 20% of each first-grade class, and then they are ranked, and then we start from the bottom. We always choose the lowest students and help boost them up as quickly as possible. So there are some schools that are not fully implemented, but that depends on the allocations that each school has and the funding for that.
So just to explain that a little further, Mr. Hamby allocates staffing to principals. We do allow principals to determine how they want to use their intervention teachers. So at the elementary level, some principals are fully bought in to the reading recovery program. There are principals who don't feel as strongly about it and choose to use their interventionists in other ways. But you can see the majority of our schools have at least one reading recovery teacher, but it's not something that the district mandates. We do leave that up to principal discretion.
So I'm just, I'm sorry, go ahead. Just as I'm listening and thinking, how does this correlate with our third-grade reading passage? Is there any, anything, if there are students that are in this, in the first grade, and they succeed through, and they get to the third grade to pass the test, are there any that fail that came back, that came through this program? Or vice versa, that we didn't catch in first grade that then fail and are held back in third grade?
Right. I'm not sure that we have district data for that.
We should be able to pull that, though. We could get Dr. Beal to check.
But yes, there are certainly going to be some that fall through the cracks after first grade. We have to look at several factors as far as, it could be, you know, an emotional barrier, depending on what the child's going through in life, basically, and also the instruction that they receive after that point. Because we're just, a point of acceleration, the, what they, the instruction that they get afterwards is going to be what's going to continue to support that. It's not that reading recovery cures them. And I almost hate the word "recovery" because it's almost like this is our be-in, you know, be-all, end-all, where, you know, they're cured, they're healed forever, you know? But that's not it. We're just here to accelerate them to the average, and then whatever happens between that point on is going to help maintain that or accelerate that forever.
Sure.
We'll see if we can get some numbers, if we can compare those.
It'd just be interesting to see. Yeah, absolutely.
To see how they fare versus the general student population as far as the third-grade reading standard. We can do that. Of course, that third-grade standard's only been in place for three or four years, but we should be able to pull some data.
Well, I was glad that you did show that graph about the third, fourth grade because I wondered, you know, we so often see what the children don't necessarily do a whole lot in the summer, and, you know, it just kind of, and I wondered if they lost a lot during the summer, but that, the fact that they get those books and they get to read in the summer, that's terrific. That really is.
Yes, we're blessed, we're blessed.
That is. Anybody else have any questions?
Great job.
Absolutely. Rebecca, thank you so much for coming tonight. That was so much good information, and we appreciate all y'all are doing. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Thoreslin.
Thank you, and I have several quick things, and then I'll spend a little time talking about vaccines. We'll start with athletics. Dr. Sloan and I got to go to Aiken last Thursday to watch Seneca High boys' basketball compete for the state championship. Unfortunately, they fell a little short in the state championship game. However, we're certainly proud of a state runner-up finish for them, so want to kind of give them a little shout out. But then also, on an individual, in an individual competition, we had two wrestlers from West Oak win their third consecutive state title. Ryan Dobbs and A.J. Dickerson both won their third straight. And that's pretty remarkable to win one, but to win three straight, so we want to certainly pat them on the back as well. There was also a second and third place from West Oak High in individuals, and they fell just a little short in the team competition, but some good success in our winter sports that we're proud of. I also want to just mention to you here, last Tuesday, I joined Dr. Ketterman at the county council meeting, and county council passed a proclamation that Dr. Ketterman actually kind of tweaked a little bit to make it be a little stronger for our county. But basically, it's just a proclamation recognizing that March is Read Across America Month and just the importance of reading. We just heard about how important reading is, and county council certainly on board with us. Dr. Ketterman did a great job and had a student come read to county council members, so appreciate her doing that and appreciate county council recognizing the importance of that to our community. Also want to point out, you've got at your places some honey, pint of honey there. A lot of our schools have observation hives. If you've not seen those, they're really remarkable. We did have one in every building. Some have ceased to be used because we have had some issues with them, just to be perfectly honest. Mr. Hamby, he, his department has to remedy some problems every now and then. We'll have swarms that come up, and, you know, we did at one school have the little escape hatch for the bees, was a little too close to a sidewalk and had some issues. But overall, it's a great learning tool, and this honey came from the hives at Westminster Elementary. So Sherry McAllister wanted you guys to have some of that, so want to thank her and the Westminster Elementary folks for that. And then finally, more positive news. And the last time we spoke, I would say I was a bit skeptical and maybe even a little disappointed about vaccines, but I do want to say thank you to all of our vaccine providers here in the county, particularly Prisma Health. I think I told you that they were really making a concerted effort to not promote any one group of individuals over another and try to keep the playing field level. And I certainly am not saying that was a bad decision, but in the end, they are giving our teachers a bit of a priority during the 1B phase that started today. I went to the hospital about 2:30 when it was Blue Ridge Elementary's turn. I saw Ms. Hammond there getting her vaccine. I asked them if they had a vaccine for ordering this, but they didn't, so she just got her vaccine. But anyway, they, you can see here, we got that word Thursday that Prisma was going to do that for us. They've set aside 250 vaccines per day for our folks, and we tried to, just in a couple of hours, figure out a way that we could balance the load and not send a bunch of people at one time and overwhelm the hospital. So Ms. Dodd gets a lot of the credit for this, but we're getting our folks vaccinated. So by Friday, every employee in the school district of Bucowin County will have had an opportunity to start the vaccination process, so we're really excited about that. We think that will just be a huge step for us in getting past the COVID pandemic. So we're really excited, and again, I want to thank, before we got news that Prisma was going to be able to allocate 1,250 vaccines to us, Ms. Dodd and I just got in the car and rode to some of the local pharmacies. We spoke to folks at Ingalls and Walgreens and CVS, and all of them were so willing to help. So just a big thank you to all the vaccine providers in the county. And anyway, so we're excited and hope that by next Monday, we're pretty confident that everybody will be in that process if they want to be. So as a part of that, you know, probably a couple months, we'll talk to you about backing off of the COVID leave program because everybody will have had the opportunity to get vaccinated, and we'll go from there. But certainly a big step forward, something we're very excited about. And that's all I have unless there are questions.
That is just such an incredible step. It really is. But I really applaud both of you for the information that you were putting out. I mean, the list and the, all of the information that you were giving to the teachers was just, it was great. It was so thorough, and really appreciate the work that you did with this, but this is great news. It really is for our schools. Thank you.
We are certainly hoping for a normal start in August.
That'd be great. All right, it's time for our February financial report from Mrs. Moore.
All right. So you do have the report. You can see that we had a good collection month. We did get our handouts and the power. We report that every year. And actually, compared to last year, we are a little bit ahead of collections, so that is also a good thing. And expenses are not up terribly much either. Did want to just, I'm sure you all are wondering, what is that $2 million check? So last year, at the beginning of the fiscal year, in the treasurer's office, there was an error in their coding, their computer coding that handles the apportionment of taxes. So money that should have gone into our debt service fund actually came into our operating fund. And we discovered this in our, in the process of doing our audit and getting ready for the bond sale for this year. So when we discovered it, I spoke with Mr. Bowles and his deputy treasurer, and we decided that we would pay that money back after we got our new power payment, that it would just put too much of a crunch on our cash flow to be able to do that before then. So that's what this payment is. It's money that we got. It was in our general fund, and we were just paying it back. Actually, got the bank statement yesterday from our debt service fund, and I could see that the payment that we made was actually in the debt service cash at the treasurer's office for us. So that is what that is.
Well, thank you, because it did stand out. You got the right handy $2 million checks.
Yep, that's a good one. Any questions?
Anybody else? No matter why the huge increase, but you answered that.
Yeah. Do power waits until January 15th?
Absolutely.
That was that. So next on my list is the COVID relief fund budget. We all have a handout at the place. I know you've heard in the news that schools are getting money from the federal government, and we are. We've gotten that through four different awards. The first one came in the spring last year. This was about $2 million, 2.1. We used this for protective, personal protective equipment, for cleaning supplies and equipment. We bought instructional software and student devices, and we also added four special education teachers to use that as funds. And then we got money, this actually came more through Molly Skierman's office. This is called, we call it LEAF funding because this is the funding that we use to pay for the five days that we had at the beginning of the school year. It is, was specific for that, and so there's, there is some leftover. We couldn't use all of ours. But we did do the five full days, and we paid all the teachers that were eligible for that. We paid principals extra, so we used about 1.3 million dollars of that. And then the next round of relief funds, we call the Coronavirus Relief Fund, got 1.1 million dollars. And there are four specific areas that we can spend that money on. School safety, we can use it to hire or contract nurses, for supplemental services for students that need extra help, and for technology purchases. So with this money, we are, we bought some school safety things. We are using it to pay our nurses for the extra time that they are spending, especially at the beginning of the year when we were contract tracing and principals would need to have the nurses' help on that night and those kind of things. It's dwindling down now, thankfully, but we have used this money to pay that. And we had teachers who are teaching an extra class or more than one extra class, and we are paying stipends to those teachers from this money also. Westminster, West Oak Middle School is having a Saturday school for some of their students, and we're using that, this money to pay for those teachers as well. And Josh was talking about our refresh of our Chromebooks. We are using some of this money to pay for those issues. That's a real.
That's great.
And then the last, the big pot, the 9.4 million dollars, is what we really want to talk to you about. This was the bill that was passed right after Christmas, right before the end of the year, and we have a proposed budget, our spending plan. This is second page. After the second page, it's actually, the third page has the things that we can spend it on. The things that we're concentrating on are the three on the back of the page. These are the new areas that we can spend. One of those is to repair or replace HVAC systems. This is Mr. Hamby's pet project, and we would like to use these funds for that.
Yes, to improve air quality is the biggest thing, and, you know, these things come in six digits, they, six, seven figures. They don't, they don't come cheaply, so we don't have the opportunity to, you know, we're pretty much banking all of our 8% money for the new Seneca Middle to get that done. So we actually had a boiler go down at Seneca High a couple of months ago that we had to replace, and that system, that mechanical system is 31 years old. It's original to the school. And in most areas, there's some, there are a few parts where we've had additions and improvements, but for the most part, it's 31 years old, and it needs to be completely overhauled and replaced, and that will fit the criteria of improving air quality and will also cover a huge expense that we would normally have to use capital funds for, scrape the money together to be able to do this.
So we were very thankful when we learned that we could use, actually use this money for that.
That's great.
Project. And then I know you've heard about our virtual program for '21-'22. We're going to use these funds to get that going, and I'll spend, the last two lines are for interventionists in our elementary schools. And this particular funding is not subject to the supplements of plant rules that normal federal funding is. So we are going to be able to use this money to save money from the general fund. So these are teachers that we'll be able to keep and aim for these, this money, so it will help us. Questions on any of that?
And I could just add, the reason we put the virtual program in there because we're looking forward to next fall, the reasoning for having a virtual program is not COVID-related. We're wanting to explore and experiment with a virtual program for the purpose of, you know, meeting students' needs if that's their best way to learn, not because people are fearful of catching COVID. However, what we've told principals is that in starting this virtual program, we're not taking teachers out of their building to teach in the virtual program. We said that we would hire teachers in addition to those that they're already allocated, so we're holding their staffing levels harmless to fund this. So what that's going to create is smaller class sizes in all of our schools, which is a positive thing because smaller class sizes means teachers can get more individualized attention, and we feel like it will help with the learning loss we've experienced over the COVID pandemic by doing this. So that's how we feel like it is definitely related to COVID-19 to do this. And we are actually waiting till after tonight. We're going to submit this plan unless anybody throws up a big red flag because we need to get that Seneca High HVAC project approved ASAP because with an HVAC replacement, if you don't get it done in the summer, you can't wait till September to do it because students are in the building. It has to be done while the building is vacated from students. So we need to get that process started immediately, and we plan to submit this tomorrow morning to the State Department. And we try to keep it simple, big spending categories, and we think it meets the requirements that the federal government put on this money through, of course, the State Department, and we'd like to move forward. So unless anyone has any major concerns, we would like to do that tomorrow morning. So unless anyone has any major concerns, we would like to do that tomorrow morning.
I don't have any concerns, just a question on the interventionist wording. Does that include any mental health for the future?
No, so when, when we use the term interventionist, when Mr. Handy allocates teachers to elementary schools, we kind of have homeroom teachers that would be your typical first, second, third, and fourth grade teacher, that have 15 to 20 students assigned to them. But then there are additional teachers at each elementary school that are like the reading recovery teachers that you learned about tonight. Or there may be a math interventionist. These are teachers who come in and pull out small groups of kids and, you know, help smaller groups of children who have specific challenges. Those are the ones we're talking about here with interventionists. So it is academic related. We were commiserating about mental health counselors this afternoon, and not because of what they're doing. They're needed and they're great, and we just can't find enough. And, and we are, we don't know what to do. It's, it's a need that we have not been able to meet at this time. So we're, we're still working hard to try to hire mental health counselors. We've got vacant positions, that we've got money to pay the, the people, if we can locate the people. But finding qualified mental health counselors has been a challenge for us for a couple of years.
And that's kind of the problem everywhere, didn't it?
Yes. I think that's consistent around.
It just seemed like every time we've heard about it, it's just, it's not just our problem, it's with other districts too. There's just not enough.
And just for another, Dr. Tevis question, we also include our gifted and talented teachers in, in some cases, in interventionists. If it's not done through the homeroom teacher, it's one of the interventionists.
So the award date, not official yet, does that mean it's, what does that mean?
We don't know the actual award date. We just get the documents from the State Department.
Oh, okay.
We don't get those documents until we've submitted the plan.
Okay.
But the money payer, is there a warrant? We just haven't got an actual award letter.
Okay.
But just a, a couple more things that are pertinent to this. This should help us with our general fund budget a little bit, and that's important. Did you mention that our?
Not yet.
Oh, you, you're coming to that. Okay. I'll leave that one alone and let her finish. But Ms. Spearman, we had a superintendent's meeting Thursday morning, and Ms. Spearman said that the latest COVID relief bill that the House, the, the federal government, the House passed, the Senate recently passed it, slightly amended, so it has to go back to the House, and then we go to the President for signing. It looks like that's going to pass. If that does, Ms. Spearman told us that there's potentially four times the amount of federal funding that we've received to this point in that next bill. So we could possibly be seeing much more federal funding because, because of COVID relief. And anyway, so more to come, possibly. It really looks that way. And I, I'm not commenting on whether it's the right thing or the wrong thing for the federal government to do what they're doing. I have pretty strong feelings about that, but I'll, I'll keep my, my feelings to myself. But the fact is, we could be looking at $30 million or more coming in this next round.
So last month when we met, you all had, y'all approved for us to sell our bonds. And in that process, we, our credit is checked, just like when you buy a home, they want to check your credit, see if you're still paying your bills. So we had a call with Moody's last week, and today I got the report. Our credit rating is the same, it didn't go down. We are in their hierarchy of, of ratings, we are in the third tier. But apparently that's a good rating, because our interest rates are really good every year when we sell bonds. But one thing they did know in that call and on, and the report, is the decline, continued decline of our fund balance could affect our credit rating. So it is important that we not keep that trend going. So glad that we can use this money to help shore that up.
Absolutely. Thanks a lot.
And that report should be coming out for the state release in the next few days.
Great. Anybody have any other questions for Gloria or Mr. Handy?
Good job. Thank you.
All right. I think that's good. All right. And Mr. Handy, the Juul lawsuit.
Right. And I mentioned at our last meeting that I had, yeah, that's what I reached out and just shared the name with me, and, and I threw that out there. And so we, doing our research for the last month, we actually had a conference call the week after our February board meeting with a number of the parties who, who would be involved in this Juul lawsuit. Also, I've noticed that Pigots County is joined in one, next door to us, Green was in one. It seems like not necessarily the same. What's going to typically happen is they're all going to end up being bunched together anyway. But after doing our research and talking with the folks who are in charge of it, and looking at what they're, they're trying to do, and again, not trying to get the perception that we are quote-unquote, you know, analysts chasing that. But there, there is cost to the district when it comes to dealing with the vaping issue. It is a problem. We have spent money for licenses for a program that our kids use. They get caught with the vaping product, they go to in-school for two days. And one of their punishments is they watch this educational video and program on vaping. They have to pass a test on it, get a certain score for that to count toward them getting out. You know, they also know that, you know, law enforcement calls are up. Our administrators are spending more time on dealing with vaping, e-cigarettes, electronic cigarettes, than we do normal tobacco and dip and those things now. So that's another issue. In fact, when Ms. Hughes had our meeting with assistant principals about the behavior code for next year, one of the things they discussed, and they discussed upping the consequences for first offense vaping, they ended up deciding not to do it, but they felt like that might deter it. But there, there is a major problem in our schools where they're having to spend time with that. But the one that really stood out to us is the, the abatement stuff where it helps for advertising for future, to try to prevent kids from joining in the habit of, you know, participating with the vape. Where the student information campaigns, vaping education classes and materials, funds that we can get to possibly help with the education for our kids with that. Surveillance cameras, the vape detectors that places now have in the bathrooms, so that when, when the smoke comes out, they can register on the phone, and an AP or law enforcement can go there. So we're not looking for a windfall or, or a lot of money out of this. We do think that it's something that we feel like we, as a school district, should support because we are feeling the effects of it. So we would like to recommend that, you know, next week you guys vote to allow us to participate. There are no upfront costs for us. The retainers and such should be taken out of any damages gained. And even if they didn't gain enough to cover that, there would be no coming back and saying, oh, well, we spent X number of hours, the county school board owes us X number of dollars. I've got the document, anything about it. But we've, we've read through it and had some people with legal knowledge look at it. So, but we're to the point now where we really need to, to decide, and, and based on our conversation, I speak for the admin team, but we, we would like to recommend that next week you guys vote on it and hopefully allow us to tell them we're going to participate.
I've noticed in some of the news clips that we get, that more and more schools in the low, low country districts and things that are participating in it, so I, I think it's important. So thank you for doing the research on it.
And I would just add that in the United States, that you can't have a law to prevent everything. And in the corporate world, when there are moral or ethical violations, you might say, it's technically not against the law, but if you look at it in retrospect, there's certainly something wrong with it, like advertising Juul on Nickelodeon, for example. Maybe it's not against the law, but should it be done? And, and the only way that corporations can be held responsible for those things in America is through the core system. So while we certainly aren't looking for a quick dollar, I agree with these folks that Juul needs to be punished for their actions, because I think it was borderline criminal the way they advertised to young people and got many, many young people across our country hooked on their product. And it's not a healthy product, it is harmful to people. And so I, I fully support doing this, just because I think it's the avenue that we have in our country to punish bad behavior on a corporate level.
Well, I appreciate y'all bringing it to us and, and again, doing the research on it, because I do think it's important, and we do need to, to think about the health and well-being of our students, any way we can help. All right. Mrs. Simmons?
Hey. All right. You all received some information about our virtual learning waiver. The Department of Education, they really want to support educational innovations, but sometimes those innovations might impede with state statutes, certain policies and regulations. So when we started planning for our virtual programming for the upcoming school year and talking with some of our representatives at the State Department, they suggested that we fill out a waiver, because as we're looking into our plans, both class size and seat time could interfere with our educational innovation plan with our virtual programming. So that is really the next step that most districts in the state are taking. As they're creating their virtual plans, they're having to submit waivers where there could be some interference with that. So for us, we are targeting the seat time and the class size, because we are working on implementing a balance of synchronous and asynchronous instruction, especially in our K8 virtual programming for next year. So that'll just give us the opportunity to share with them what our plans are going to be. We're also, in the waiver, have to identify a goal within our strategic plan that could be interfered with as well. So the one that we are looking at is just our student achievement goal, which coordinates with increasing our graduation rate. But our hope is with our data that we have been analyzing here at the district level, that our students are participating in our virtual program now, if they have consistent attendance, they're participating, turning in their assignments, they're doing well in the virtual program. So our hope is being able to offer this more personalized pathway for some of our students who are excelling in this platform of learning, that it will help and continue to increase our graduation rate, which will then, you know, be a positive impact on that goal within our strategic plan. And also at the high school level, you know, our supplemental courses that we're offering through our franchise are only asynchronous, so they will be, you know, self-paced with the student. So again, that could interfere with some seat time and also class size. So we just want to make sure we're covered in all areas as we move forward with our planning. And again, that was suggested by Dr. Mathis at the State Department to complete the waiver for our school district. So our hope is tonight, if you have questions or we need to do any more discussion about it, though we're operating kind of on a quick timeline here with making sure that we can get this waiver in front of the State Board of Education, because that's the next step in the process for them to look at it and to review it. So we're hoping that we can take action tonight for you all to approve, for us to go ahead and submit that waiver, and then we'll also, also submit our virtual application plan as well for the state to review.
I hope y'all had an opportunity to look at the virtual learning waiver that we were sent. Does anybody have any questions?
I was just curious, what is that, what was our 2020 graduation rate? Do we have that?
I don't have it. I was talking about it. We can have that for you.
And will, will that, will 2020 be, no, they wouldn't be included? It would start next year?
What do you mean? It would start?
This waiver we are approving for 2022.
Yeah. We're asking for it for the fall, and the timeline the State Department gave us would be, we really need to get that application to the State Department as soon as possible. That's why we need to kind of get you to approve this, if you will, tonight. Normally, you wouldn't take action in a work session, but we kind of need it because of the timeline. So if you would be willing to do that. Basically, you're saying, in our virtual classes, we're not necessarily going to have 120 hours of FaceTime between teachers and students, because some of the activities that the virtual classes would offer would be student-led and, you know, maybe parent-facilitated, that kind of thing. So there may not be, in a normal classroom situation at the high school level, for example, students are in the teacher's classroom for 120 hours minimum. That, that's, so we're asking for leniency on that for a virtual environment, because it won't be 120 face-to-face hours in all cases.
And this year, the seat time was waived because of COVID. It will not be that way next year. So districts just need to be prepared with completing that waiver, because they, again, they want us to be innovative with what we're working towards with virtual programming. We just need to make sure we're doing it in all the right ways.
And I do feel very confident in what we're offering. I think we're starting small, but we've got good teachers who have applied for these positions. We're going to try for a year without the mess of COVID surrounding us. We think we can do a better job than we were able to do this year. But a big part of that is adding an asynchronous segment to the classes, which simply means that the teacher can do some self-paced assignments where the students work individually, or maybe even in small groups without the teacher supervising. Whereas this year, most of it was just Google Meet, teacher-led, a much larger requirement for the, the synchronous time, which just means that the teacher and the student are online synchronously at the same time. Asynchronous just kind of relaxes it a bit, but we feel like it will be better in the virtual environment.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments, questions? All right. Do I have a motion that we accept the waiver request for virtual education, the, the ability to go ahead and submit that to the South Carolina Department of Education, so it can be approved? Okay? Is that second? All right, we have a motion second. Any more discussion at all? All in favor? Okay. You're ready to go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Does anyone have anything else for tonight? If not, if there are no objections, we will go into executive session for personnel items, deployment recommendations, and changes. We certainly appreciate y'all being here tonight. Thank you for coming. Welcome you back.